All right, it's now six o'clock, I'll call the order. This regularly scheduled board meeting, the Granite Falls School Board. And by all please stand and join me in the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. In attendance tonight, we have all of our board directors, Director Beach, Director Green, Director Panegis, Director Carey and myself. As well as Dr. Middleton. Also have our two student reps who will be sworn in. Right now, actually, so moving on to item two A oath of office for student representatives.
All right, I'm gonna have Emma come up first. So just repeat after me, raise your right hand. I state your name.
I am Elanigan.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And laws of the United States and State of Washington.
And laws of the United States and State of Washington.
And I will faithfully perform the duties.
And I will faithfully perform the duties.
Of the student representative to the Board of Directors.
To the student representative of the Board of Directors.
Of the Granite Falls School District 332.
The Granite Falls School District 332.
According to the law, to the best of my ability.
According to the law, to the best of my ability.
All right, thanks, Emma, thanks for serving. Next, we have Maya, Maya, welcome. And we're so glad that you're representing Granite Falls High School. So if you would raise your right hand. I state your name.
I am Maya Manabusen.
Do solemnly swear that I will support.
I do solemnly swear that I will support.
The Constitution and laws of the United States and State of Washington.
Support the Constitution and laws of the United States and State of Washington.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties.
Of the student representative to the Board of Directors.
Of the student representative to the Board of Directors.
Of Granite Falls School District 332.
Of Granite Falls School District 332.
According to the law, to the best of my ability.
According to the law, to the best of my ability.
Great, congratulations, welcome Maya.
I thank you both for willing to serve in the Board of Directors with us. It's vital to have your voice here to help us in our decision making, so again, thank you all. Moving on to item two B, board comments, we'll start my screen top left, Director Beach, you're the person on my screen. Still muted.
I know. My question was, where did the button go? There it is. So just a couple of comments tonight, number one, just wanted to remind everyone to vote and to turn in your ballots, mail it in or put it in the box at the library and also on a personal note, just grateful to the staff and administrators that have reached out to me to send their condolences on the passing of my mother this week, thank you.
Thank you, Director Green.
I was gonna echo Beach's comment, go vote. That's all I have.
Thank you, Director Carey.
Hey, good evening. Just wanted to say a huge congratulations to the Grant Falls football team, man, they are playing some amazing football this year, they've got a big game coming up this weekend, but they are, they're just, it's been a pleasure to watch them play and see how successful they've been this year, and I just wanted to publicly just tell them what a great job they're doing. Certainly wanted to give my condolences to Director Beach on the passing of her mother. Unbelievably heartbreaking and wishing an early birthday to Dr. Middleton, whose birthday is the Saturday, I believe. That's it.
All right, Director Panegis. You're still muted. Dr. Pete? You're muted, we can't hear you. We'll get you some help real quick while we're waiting for help to get to you for your computer. Oh, there you are. Can we hear you?
I can't.
So, we got you.
You've got my picture on the side, yeah. Yeah, I guess I'm okay, thanks Marshall. Anyway, my condolences to Tina. And the sports are going, well, I'll say a little more or not say it to that later on. And Josh, I can't believe it, you don't look forty. Congratulations.
You don't look forty.
I don't look forty.
Is that everything?
That's all.
Let's go to our student reps from Crossroads, we'll start with Emma.
At Crossroads, the last three Mondays, we've been doing our state testing that we would have done two years ago, we'll do that again in the spring, kids are powering through it, it is hard, it is not Mondays, but they've made it, they're done. Almost, and then next week, we, on Friday, we have a pumpkin carving event, which kids are really excited for, and then on Thursday, times haven't been announced yet for the theater program or theater and special effects makeup, they're gonna do like a little haunted house during school, so that the kids can go probably towards the end of the day, I think. That's pretty exciting.
So is that haunted house just for students or is that open to the public?
Uh, I don't think it's open to public, but
Okay.
Board members, I'm sure.
All right, from the high school, Maya.
The past couple weeks, we've been working on homecoming, that's happening this Saturday. Really, that's been kind of our biggest event so far, right now, is just homecoming.
Thank you, my comments, I want to echo sentiments already been expressed, that it's time to vote, I encourage everyone to vote, it's what makes our democracy work. Putting pen to paper and turning it in, I really like the comment though, don't just fill it out, turn it in. And then condolences also Director Beach for the loss in her family. And then I wanted to make a personal comment. For about eight years, I've been, you know, putting on little tailgating events at the home football games. And this last Friday, we had our largest turnout ever, we tailgated, had a chili cookout with people, it was great to see the community come together to support our schools and our athletics and to see whatever he was doing, so. It was really good to see that, I know there's more than just football, I know we're getting volunteer support from the community for our soccer program, and it's just, it's exciting to see the community come together, so I really want to say thank you to everyone involved in that, and it's great to see. So moving on, before we move on, I actually like to make a motion that we add an item under district reports. Add a business report, it'll be the new item B, and then B becomes C and C becomes D on the agenda. Marshall has a report he'd like to report on in there instead of adding it to the agenda.
I'll second that motion.
What's been made in second, any further discussion or questions? Not all called for a vote, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi, okay, Tina, I assume your hand was yes, so it passes unanimous, so. Moving on to district reports, 3A student search report, Beth Mills is going to give us a special education.
Hello.
Hello.
So I'm guessing I need to pull up the report and share my screen.
No, Dr. Middleton, aren't you gonna do that?
You haven't. Well, let's see, yep, I should have that right here.
And then you just tell them to scroll.
Okay, when I pause, maybe?
That'll work.
Yeah. Okay, we just wanted to share a few highlights with the board. Thank you, Beth Mills started in Grant Falls July 1st. The first slide here, I thought it would be important for you to see our special education count, this is the October 1 count for this year and the last few years, and also our district count. And the, this is not just the number of special education students that we have, but it's also those where we have also current compliant paperwork, so when you see 2021 special education, there are a couple there that are missing, so that number should be a little bit higher, we should have a couple of numbers, but you can see that we've had pretty steady enrollment, when you look at the October 1 count. We tend to grow, but I think it's also interesting to look at our percentage as relates to the overall district numbers. And then we wanted to show you the number of special education staff that we have and how it has changed or not changed over the last several years. We have special education teachers. My screen just went blank. And special education paras and then other special education staff. And that includes our school psychologists, speech language pathologists, occupational therapists and physical therapists. And BCBA, I think the, probably the one number that might jump out to you is the number of special education paras in the 21-22 school year as compared to previous years. A couple of things that I just wanted to highlight as to what I've seen so far in my first few months in Grant Falls. The special education staff are a committed, hardworking group of people. Really great folks here, in particular, we have some excellent new hires, not just the administrators that Josh hired, but a couple of really great special education teachers and paraeducators with some really nice skills and instincts. We have involved families in Grant Falls, which is super awesome, and just, it's just so great to be back in person, and it's really important for our special education students to be back in person full time, I just can't say enough about that. We do have some challenges, you probably have heard, but we're, there are some staffing shortages, which is why we had a career fair last week. In particular, the paraeducators, we've had, we've had some issues there, there's also a number of requests in staffing and additional staff, and that has been, those two things together have definitely created some challenges. The COVID return. Well, like I said, it's great to be back in person, but coming back has been, has been interesting, and I think probably at Mountain Way, it's, it's probably the, that's probably the biggest the example that shows the most difficulty in terms of the return, right, because we have primary students, second graders who didn't finish their kindergarten year, first graders who had the craziest kindergarten year ever, and a kindergarten class that if they had a preschool experience, it was definitely truncated, and as you probably know and aware that maybe kids that were at home, maybe the parenting the last couple of years has been a little different than what we would have normally have done if we weren't under quarantine. Oh, and then the quarantine impacts that have happened in coming back and tracking that with our special, with our special needs students, in particular with our paraeducators that have had to be quarantined, we've had two life skills classrooms that had to be completely quarantined, which was pretty disruptive. I would definitely say that the turnover in district leadership, being the third director in three years, has been a challenge. And we do have some inexperienced staff, but they will get there, and again, our third year teachers didn't finish their first year in person, so it's, it's, it's a thing, but that's fine, they're gonna get there. I thought it might be interesting for you to see safety net for the last few years in terms of the amount that we have requested and the amount that we've been awarded. And you're aware of what safety net is and why we request it. And I did try to quantify where we are currently so that we could be targeting that information to share with Marshall in terms of how we're looking financially, and then also to make sure that we're getting as much of this money as we possibly can in our plans for submission. And you might know that the threshold is about $35,000, we have had a decrease in our out of district students. And while we have had an increase in our paraeducator staff, they tend to be early career paraeducator staff, so some of them don't even meet the threshold of the amounts that we're expected to exceed, and some only slightly, so as of right now, our estimated safety net request is, is, is quite a bit less than we have and have seen in the past, but we expect this to grow. And then I suggest, I pulled a couple of data points here that I thought you might be interesting for you to see how Granite Falls compares to the state. I think probably the ones here that that jump out to me the most is our regular four-year graduation rate. And the eighty to 100% time spent in general education. And so that's, that's where we look at how much time our students are spending in the general education setting. A few years ago, 51.6% wouldn't have been bad. At least compared to the state, not compared to the nation, but compared to the rest of Washington State, but there's definitely been a push for inclusive practices in the last couple of years, and not having been a part of that, we've lagged a little bit behind. So just, just thought I'd share some of that data with you. And also OSPI has shared with us that we will be receiving a monitoring visit. Our visit will, it will be an onsite fiscal visit, will occur in January. And they've shared with us some of the risk factors that led them to choose Granite Falls as a district to visit. Couple of things here just to point out, the special education enrollment, as you, as you saw when I, when I, on the very first slide in terms of our special ed enrollment compared to the district enrollment, and we're at about nineteen or twenty percent. Most districts in the state are about thirteen to fourteen, the state flags that flags us when we're over seventeen percent, so that was one of the factors. I think you might know that we were significantly disproportionate in the number of white students that we were sending out of district, and so we were required to set aside fifteen percent of our federal funds last year as part of a comprehensive coordinated early intervention services and a plan that we are implementing this year in our elementary schools to prevent that from happening. That flagged us, and then just our safety net amount, they wouldn't expect us to to actually be requesting that amount that is higher than what they would expect, and so these are the things that flagged us, and they'll be visiting us in January, and probably they haven't shared yet exactly what that's gonna look like, but we expect a file review and a lot of information that we get to share with OSPI, and then they'll give us a report and tell us hopefully what we can do to, to, to to start moving in the right direction in terms of these factors. So any questions?
Board, any questions?
I'll start, if it's okay. Thank you for the report, a couple of questions, so the numbers that you give on the first slide, the overall special ed, so that is, break that number down, is that every kid in the district with IEPs, life skill kids, all of that stuff, is that, is that what comes to that 397?
Yes, that is every student that on October 1st was enrolled in the district and had a current compliant IEP that we were able to count and submit on the special ed count.
As well as life skill kids and all of that.
Yeah, every special education student.
Okay. So I guess the first thing that came to mind, you may have mentioned that we had some challenges with paras, so just looking at comparative data that you provided on the next slide, where we have a relative similar population to what we had in eighteen nineteen as far as special ed students, but almost twice the number of paras. Relatively high special ed teachers and stuff, so, and you may have mentioned, it sounded like you felt like we were still low on that para number, is that what you're saying? And if so, what's the right number of paras that we should have?
Well, I, I just wanted to point out the difference, because I think you could probably see there's been a a pretty hefty increase in the number of paraeducators, especially in the last year.
So I guess, are you comfortable with that number of forty-five is what I'm asking, or are you saying we need more than even forty-five?
That's a complicated question.
Wouldn't that just depend upon the IEPs?
Well, we have some classroom paraeducators and we have some one-on-ones, and so right now, would I say, are we, are we understaffed? Well, in a way, we're understaffed because we have some unfilled positions, and we've had some staff that have been out on quarantine. And so I, I don't, I haven't been able to feel like we've been fully staffed because the staffing that's in place hasn't been in place all year. If we were at full capacity and all of the positions that are listed here were filled and folks were attending on a regular basis, I think I'd have a better sense of whether that was appropriate or not, right now, could we do with less? I don't think so.
Okay. So I guess I'm just repeating what I'm hearing then, so if once, I guess, the dust settles, people come back from quarantine, then you probably have a better feeling on if forty-five is enough, or if we need even more than forty-five, I guess, I'm trying to figure out, not necessarily if we need less, or I'm trying to gauge if you feel like we need more than forty-five.
I would say probably we don't need more. No.
Okay. The other question I have relative to the state data that you provided, I appreciate the graduation rates, I've never been presented, and I guess I just want to clarify first off, this data is just for special ed students, obviously, right?
Yes.
Okay, we've had a lot of, there's been a lot of discussion in the public about graduation rates, and you see this, and you're like, whoa. So not that this isn't a concern, but I've never had data presented like this relative specifically to special ed students, and not necessarily something that we need to get into tonight, because I'm sure you weren't prepared for necessarily this deep of a conversation, but I'd be interested to figure out, obviously, there's a significant divide between our graduation rate here for special ed students and comparative to the state. And then I guess what's even a little bit more concerning, or well, as concerning, I'll say it that way, is the kids that then go on to higher education. So I guess I'd love to have a deeper dive specific to those two things and ideas, feedback, plans on how we're going to address that and systematically change that.
Okay, I would say that this is district-wide, so this does include Granite Falls and Crossroads Open Doors.
Okay, so maybe, I guess, maybe you can provide that information then delineate it by school, because, and not that the grad, that matters in Crossroads as well as in Open Doors, but obviously, those programs are geared to kids who are significantly credit deficient, and obviously, that would drag if we're looking at a four-year graduation rate, so I definitely get that description, and obviously, I'm explaining it for, you know, our community that's watching right now too, so maybe you can delineate that for the high school, for Crossroads, and then Open Doors, which will help me get a better read on that information.
Yeah, I believe we can pull that out by building.
Okay. So the, I guess, describe to me what the thirty-day initial evaluation timeline and the eighty-one hundred percent, just quick synopsis, what do those mean? Help me understand what those data points mean.
Thirty-five day initial evaluation timeline is a compliance issue, and this is, so when when we get consent for an initial evaluation, we have thirty-five school days to complete an initial evaluation, and the expectation from the state is that we be at one hundred percent. The state, you can see, was at ninety-nine point three, we were at ninety-four point four. So given the size of Granite Falls, that was probably a small number of initial evaluations that were late. But the goal is always one hundred percent, and it's a compliance issue, and they do flag us for that, and we do have to respond to that every year through our compliance mechanisms. The eighty to one hundred percent in general education, that, that is a goal. OSPI in particular is concerned about that because of, Washington actually is lagging behind the nation in serving students in the general education setting, and like I said, a couple of years ago, fifty-one point six actually probably would have been on par with the state, but the state has been pulling ahead in that in terms of serving more special education students in the general education setting.
Okay. So I guess certainly that thirty-five day initial evaluation, you know, raises a red flag, and I'd love to, you know, include it with I'd love to have a deeper conversation at another point or another presentation about how we're going to address that, whether that's a support issue or, you know, how we bite that apple. Especially if there's an expectation and a divide from where we are from a state level and an expectation to be at a hundred percent, as you said, so that would be wonderful. And then on the last slide, I guess I, I just want to parse through the visit that we're going to get from the state, because in my mind, and I guess, correct me if I'm wrong, but in my mind, it's not necessarily a bad thing, it's a good thing. We do have, and have had significant high safety nets requests because we have significantly high costs here. And, you know, so my thought was having them come here, reviewing, giving input, seeing the challenges and the costs and all that we have. Might give us some change up the line at the state or something along those lines. Listening to you, it felt like it was a negative thing, but do you disagree with kind of that positive viewpoint that I have on it?
Well, they did flat, they do flag us. So the safety net award, I think there's three increments, I think it's under six hundred thousand, and then I think it's six hundred thousand to five million, or something like that, and then above five million, which is probably like Seattle. And then the percentage, the percentage of high cost students, and so over three percent would, would be a number that they would be concerned about, the visit really is to look at, do we have internal controls in place around, around fiscal issues, and then also to look at best practice. So it's sort of two-pronged, there's one that's very particular to our fiscal piece, and they'll look at our data management and how we're, how we're how we're operating in our fiscal level, but then they're also going to be looking at best practices for serving special education students. And we're hoping that they're gonna give us some really good feedback and some specific, you know, it's usually called corrective action. But I actually look forward to that and hope that they are very specific and some, some things that they would suggest that we would do to improve, you know, serving our students in a fiscally responsible way.
Yeah, so, so it'll be, they'll give feedback, they'll review the process. Yeah, so, so it'll be, they'll give feedback, they'll review the processes and stuff like that. And having someone else, you know, look in and give that feedback, I think, isn't necessarily a bad thing, but I, I appreciate you explaining that a little bit deeper. Uh, do we know when that's going to happen? Uh, is it, is it January? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, January twenty first and twenty second or twentieth and twenty first, there's, they're, they're planning on a two day. But if they can get it done in one day, they'll, they'll do it in one day.
So is it like an audit where they meet with the board before or and after, kind of give us their results or how does that work?
I think usually, um, the Washington Integrated System of Monitoring doesn't necessarily meet with the school board. They might, they might do an opening session or a closing session where they might, we, we could invoke, we could invite school board members. There's a lot of information that we'll have to provide ahead of time. That's probably going to be, that's kind of probably going to fall on me and Marshall to, to, to provide that information. And then they will do a file review so that will impact my staff. And then they'll do some visits, probably do some classroom visits and interview some teachers. Um, but yeah, there probably will be an opening session and a closing session and it's possible that they may suggest we invite some school board directors.
Okay, if there's not, and obviously I'm just speaking for myself, but if there's not, I, I would love to have a, some sort of meeting or, or review of the information. I mean, obviously this is, um, this is really good information and information I need to help, um, be the best board director I can for this district. So if not, I, I would love for us to set something up where we can review it then, maybe a study session or something.
Okay, yeah.
That's all I have.
Any other questions for?
I'd like, I, Tina had her hand up first, that's okay.
Go ahead, Tina.
Thank you. Um, could you go back to slide number two for me? I think it's slide number two. So, oh, there it is. So, um, so I'm looking at kind of the percentage here. Oh, I guess maybe, maybe it's three. It's so small on the left side that. Here we go. So I like Director Kerry picked up on the, the ratio of paras to special education teachers. Right? And so if we have nineteen, twenty ish teachers, we have a ratio of around about two, two and a half paras per educator. Now, I, I know that we do have some one on ones. I was under the impression based on the last time we had a report, which wasn't from you, so certainly I'm not holding you to that. Right? But I was sort of under the impression that there was, there was a review of the one on one determination process or, or kind of the process procedures maybe around that. Can you give me some context of? We have forty five paras, we have open positions. I've, I've heard from teachers in the past that they felt like they didn't have paras to support their classroom, but the numbers would indicate there would be about two and a half paras per special education teacher. So what am I, how am I doing this wrong? Like what am I not understanding about the wrong numbers I'm looking at?
Well, I can tell you that there are unfilled positions right now. Um.
Unfilled edu, or paras or unfilled special education teachers?
Other, okay. Yeah. So this forty five does include unfilled positions that are out there. This is the number of positions that are what we consider to be the positions that we have, but they're not all, they're not all currently filled.
Is the number of paras determined by a, like a, a policy or control from, at the state level? Like if this is in the IEP, then that position has to be supported by the district? I'm just wondering why I hear from teachers that they're not always getting para support, but I'm seeing, maybe I should re, reword the question. How many of the forty five positions are open? Maybe that is why there's a disconnect. Does that make sense?
Yes, um. Off the top of my head, I would say there's actually only about three that are unfilled, but we have had several that either were out for COVID, were quarantined for COVID, were out for LNI for, for various issues in the first six weeks of school. And so if you're hearing from staff that they don't have all of their.
Oh, I'm not saying I've heard from anybody specifically right now. I've just heard in the past that they feel like, you know, they're, they're dying under the weight of all the required paperwork and these kinds of things. There's a lot, right? It's a lot for one teacher at a time, but so I, I felt like maybe they didn't have enough support, but the number tells me there's support available. So I guess, I don't understand how we're about the same number of teachers, we're fifteen more paras. We're about the same other special education staff. So maybe it is just the quarantining and the LNI and the open positions all kind of stacked on top of each other, right? I haven't heard anything like super recently. It's not like I, I just want to make sure that our teachers are feeling supported. You know what I mean? And I, and if we're required to have special education paras that, that aren't available for teachers to use, right? Or I don't know what the word is, but to, to, you know, have a little help there, then, I don't know, I was just asking, I guess.
Yeah.
And then, oh, sorry, go ahead.
No, I was, I was just going to say that since I have, since I started in July first, I think we, we, I think we added maybe two paras. Um, because of particular student issues, at least in the overall uh, forty five, whether they're filled or not currently. Um, so the rest, so the rest of that increase between thirty and forty five, um, would have been before my time.
Uh, okay. And then there was one other, oh, I remember I saw the safety net numbers. Obviously there's a discrepancy eighteen nineteen, you know, throughout the years between what we request and what we receive for the award. I will be super transparent and say, I do not understand the state process of how they determine the award amount, but I guess my question or my comment to you is if the reason is we're not doing some sort of paperwork, right? Um, is, okay, is it right? Is, could that be one of the reasons and what can we do this year to be better?
Yeah, so what's interesting is that, you know, sometimes when you look at the requested amounts, sometimes that's inflated because what you submitted may have been incorrect, right? Like maybe you were trying to get more than really was quantifiable on IEPs and invoices and POs and, and what we were actually serving the students. So those two things have to line up. OSPI will look at that. They will review every invoice and every IEP and make sure it ma, it matches. So, um, luckily I have a little bit of experience in doing safety net um, in some large systems. And so I think, uh, we will, we will make sure that what we submit, the paperwork we submit and the amount that we receive, um, hopefully will line up exactly. It might not be a million dollars. But hopefully what we request, we will receive, we will, we will receive the amount that we request.
Okay. And finally, I do remember for the data points you gave on graduation rates and, um, higher education, I remember in the past that we've included in there, there was an additional statistic of fifth year graduation. So there was fourth year graduation and then fifth year graduation. And I wondered if you could just provide that, you know, if that's available, provide that to us as the board as well, just because it gives us an apples to apples kind of comparison of what we've received in the past. And I think probably that fifth year was provided to us because of crossroads, open doors, et cetera. And sometimes it's just, it's just a, a special education thing. Thank you. Appreciate the report.
Sure.
Dr. Penegas, you had a question?
Yes, um, first of all, I really want to thank you for this report. It's very clear and understandable and comparative on important things. Uh, so I'm really glad you're here and I really appreciate the clarity of the report. The one thing I wanted to bring, to point out, uh, and I guess this is a long term thing on the higher ed. Uh, comparing with the state, I think it was, uh, three point something for, for Granite Falls and nineteen point something for the, uh, the state. Uh, but, and I know you can get, you know, off, off, uh, off guard or statistics can interpret in a lot of ways, yeah, three point three three and nineteen point five. But I do think that is a important, long-term goal. Uh, I know, uh, I've been around special ed and, and the classes and there's some of those, uh, those students are really really, uh, on task and, uh, great kids. I guess the, the thing is to keep the bar high for special ed. I mean, I, for higher ed and potential, uh, among the, the special ed kids. And I, I know, I, I'm confident that will, will happen. Uh, the, those kids need to be challenged at the high end, uh, you know, obviously as much or more than anybody else. So, uh, thank you for a great report. Thank you.
All right, that it? All right, let's move on to item three B, uh, the new item three B, uh, Marshall.
Uh, would you guys like me to share my screen at all or did you guys get the report ahead of time enough to, to look at it a little bit?
I know I did.
Yeah, I was able to look at it too, but I would love for you to share your screen.
Okay, I'm, I'm making sure that's.
Yeah, I agree.
Can everybody see the PowerPoint? Yeah, okay, um, so just some highlights. So first of all, I want to apologize for not having this out sooner. Um, year end is not done, but our fund balances are locked in and aren't going to change. And I think that's mostly what people care about is where our fund balance is going to end up for all the funds. Um, I know that we usually report out on this in more detail in the November meeting, but we have success in Ed that night. And I think we're trying to have a big success in Ed and a smaller board meeting. So I didn't want to go all the way to December without sharing this information because I think it's great information. Um, in the November packet, I will have the full F one ninety six in there for you guys to view and for the community to view, but, um, all, all hundred and eight pages or whatever it is. But, um, this is my normal looking board report, but it's all the year end data embedded. So, um, a couple of highlights. Our final FTE, we've been talking about this for the last three months, because it's been locked in since June was two thousand and twelve. We were down eighty two from budget. Um, our current enrollment though, as of October count is twenty one fourteen, so that's a hundred and two better than how we ended the previous year and forty better than what we budgeted for. So there's good news on the horizon enrollment wise. Um, our year end fund balance is going to be one point three plus million dollars. Um, based on our twenty twenty one expenditures, this will be a four point one percent fund balance. And as far as I've been able to look back in our history, it's our largest fund balance we've had that I've been able to see. Um, reminder that board policy requires five percent fun, fun balance by the end of the twenty one, twenty two school year. You know, it's, it's going to be another challenging year, you know, we're, we're having to, for lack of a better way to phrase it, we're, we're adding a lot of staffing to address some of the problems we're having this year with, um, people going out on leaves frequently with just managing the, the COVID protocols. Um, for the twenty twenty one school year, we used seven hundred and ninety six thousand dollars of federal stimulus to offset the revenue shortfalls that we had on apportionment. So we, we were reduced by seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars in state apportionment for enrollment and we were reduced by three hundred and twenty thousand dollars for transportation. And as a reminder, we claimed, or we were able to recoup nine hundred and ninety five thousand dollars in safety net. That's when I say safety net, I say safety net and community impact. I think when Beth is talking about safety net, she's purely talking about the safety net portion. So there's another chunk that'll be community impact that will go after this year also, and that's going to be in the range of two hundred thousand dollars. Um, all our other funds are looking in good shape. Um, ASB kind of went sideways and for the twenty one, twenty two school year, ASB is it, we haven't been collecting a whole lot of ASB revenue for the last two years. So the, the school district, uh, district office is helping to seed some of the sports programs and some of the extracurricular activities there until the, the schools can get back to normal for collecting fees and build up their, their balances a little bit. Um, just a couple of the quick highlights. Uh, here's the enrollment for so far this year. Um, you can see that we're at, uh, twenty one fourteen. Kindergarten strong. Um, we have two fairly small classes that are going to fall off in the next two years. We have ninety nine eleventh graders and a hundred and twenty one seniors. And that's, so that's our, we see our enrollment growing significantly over the next few years as those smaller classes fall off. Um, that's really all I kind of wanted to highlight, just open it up for some questions if you guys have any.
Yeah, so let's go ahead. I'll try something different. Let's do, uh, one question at a time, go around. So directors, any questions? Try a little different this time. Okay.
I have a question. I was just waiting for someone else to talk. I, I knew my one question. Marshall, the, the numbers that you give in this report are different from the report that we just got from Melanie. So is this more current than what was sent to us to this evening?
I think the only number that changed was the hundred and two FTE better. I think that was just a math error that I said ninety eight. I guess it's a number that's changed since I gave it to Melanie.
All right, you have a question? All right, let's move on to item three. Oh, thank you, Marshall.
Oh, I, I had another question. I was still limited to one, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, I, I just want to again say how unbelievably happy I am for that general fund balance. That's like, Marshall, that's, that's wonderful. That is, we've been, we've talked a lot about that, so I'm glad that we're there. Um, if I, I just have one question I've asked you privately, but I guess I just want to ask it in a public forum. Um, related to our co-op, uh, association payment with Lake Stevens School District. Um, I've curiosity, just because I've heard the rumor, it's, uh, that's been said a couple of times. Have we now or in your recent memory ever not made a payment to Lake Stevens Co-op?
No. We, uh, so for instance, for the, right now, we have not made a payment yet for the twenty one, twenty two school year because our first bill will usually come in November for the school year. They have to get all their processes in place. We tend to get, um, bills for the twenty twenty one school year all the way up through October, but we've paid all those bills. Um, you know, they, they, they come in about two and a half months after the fact, just because it, it takes a while for Lake Stevens to get all the trip reports back to reconcile all their, all their data and then bill us. So we typically get a bill two months, like the, you know, the, the June bill will often come in end of July, early August. But, and we, we pay it usually in our next check run. So I mean, there, as far as I know, there's no, we're, we're up to date, we're on time.
And I don't want to belabor the point, but I guess I just want to ask more directly. So to your, to just so that everyone's clear. Cause I, I might even tag this video if I, if I see the statement again. I mean, you've been our, our director, um, our finance guy for a number of years now. And obviously I'm not holding your feet to fire, but as far as your recent memory, there's never been a time that we have quote unquote been so broke that we've never paid, that we did not pay the Lake Stevens Co-op.
That, yeah, that's, that's never happened.
Yeah, that's all I have. That's all I have.
Well, okay. Thank you. Uh, move on then. Thank you, Marshall. Uh, three B superintendent report, uh, three C, sorry. We re- relettered those.
Really, I, I want to share some celebrations. We've gone through a lot of uh data already this evening, but just a few things. And first, one thing that Beth had mentioned earlier was she highlighted some of the great building administrators that we've hired this year. But really, I also want to highlight her because she um has been doing a, a great job as our director of student services. I'm so glad that uh uh she applied and considered Granite Falls. And you can tell just by her demeanor that of, you know, things don't ruffle her. Uh, she knows what the reality is and she's going to address things. And so I'm really glad that she's on our team. And in terms of monitoring, uh, that's going to happen in January. Um, if you recall last year, when we were in the midst of some uh specialized strife, we had even thought about asking the state to come in and do an audit of um, uh, of our practices and, and finances. So for them to uh, make this decision to come, I'm, I'm thrilled because I think it's only going to make us better. Some upcoming events, we've got, of course, homecoming football uh this, this week. And, you know, we've highlighted uh football, but we've got such a great band and great cheer squad. It's uh, it's really just a great event when uh folks come out and celebrate that. And of course, all of our fall activities are underway and doing well and just um pleased with that we're, that's one thing that's closer to normal than uh, than other things. And um, so again, just a real uh highlight there. We do a parent conferences coming up on November first and second. And I believe Director Beach and Director Butler and I are going to do a Facebook Live on that, on some of the highlights. And um so looking forward to that to get more information out to our parents and um that event. Our success in Ed is in two weeks. And as Marshall just shared, that's going to be the highlight of our meeting. We want to invite those recipients. It'll be closed to, uh, our meeting will be in person, but closed only to the recipients. And um, looking forward to that on November third. Uh, and then just a sort of a uh heads up to our, our board. There are a number of policies that we're, we need to be working on. And so between now and December first, Melanie and I are going to get those out to you. And uh, as we'll continue to do the multiple readings, but there's some that we just want to get in front of you now so you can have some advanced reading. Uh, today, um, you've all received the staff and the, and our board of directors are, uh, we're doing our third annual seventy-five day holiday challenge. So I hope that you'll participate in that. I know our, our staff love it when our board also participates in those types of things. And then finally, I just want to do another shout out for for the career fair. It turned out to be such a highlight. You know, we had over a hundred people walk in on a rainy uh Saturday uh morning and afternoon. And for us to do interviews on the spot, just great organization. Just want to thank uh Jennifer Harmon and her team for making that all happen. And really, it, it was a lot of people um who led the, who participated in that effort. Uh, we had our administrators there on site to uh meet and greet and transportation was there, associations were there. So it was just a, a, a real success and something we'll, we'll do again in the future. That's uh my report.
All right, board, uh, let's go through our questions. Okay. Move on then to item three E, board report. Start with W I A A, Director Panakis?
Yes, I have good news and bad news. Bad news and good news. Uh, I did not get a chance or uh on connecting with Michael this uh last couple of days. We've been working on it. But the good news that Carl already mentioned as far as the teams and uh a lot of spirit going. And the I'm glad to include it, the band. Uh, the uh, the good news is I have one more report on W I A A left in me. And stay tuned, two weeks from now, I will have a deluxe version for you. Uh, but uh, everything's on the positive end overall. Thank you.
Questions for Dr. Panakis? All right. I, I know we had a, a great legislative report two weeks ago, but Director Carey, anything to add this week?
Uh, just an update that the Fall Regional Meeting is this Saturday. It is virtual. Um, so um, and it's something that we can all attend. Um, it's, I don't know if I've been to a regional meeting in the Zoom format uh yet, but um, it's a, it's a good time to talk with other uh district leaders uh in our district area one. Um, and uh kind of understand challenges that they're facing, best practices, kind of, you know, how they're addressing it and just kind of a, a good time to um speak with other colleagues. So I would encourage anyone that is available to be able to, to go on Saturday.
Any questions? All right, Director Green, community report?
I have nothing at this time.
All right, thank you. We've got item four, item from the floor. Um, I was informed, Melanie, no one signed up for item from the floor. Moving on to five unfinished business, there is none. Item six, new business redistricting proposal. You want to walk through that real quick?
Sure. Uh, a couple of months ago, we uh shared with the board that after a census, the state wants us to look at our, the zones that each of you represent. And ideally have about equal number of, of residents in each of those uh, each of those zones. And so we had uh someone take a look at the zones. Considered all of you as well as the candidates who are up, uh, who are running for board uh in November so that they could capture both uh those on the board as well as those who could potentially be on the board. And what you found in your packet was um the result of their work. And so uh what I would ask is that uh after reviewing that, that we would um get an approval for that. Uh, it doesn't take effect immediately. We need to do legal descriptions and, and that sort of thing, but we would be at least uh approving this phase of, of the proposal and, and what was uh submitted by that company.
Question board?
I have a stupid question, Dr. M, that you may or may not be able to answer, but just out of curiosity. Um, I, I typically, when you have districts, you have voting by district, but I know we vote here in your Appal School District at large. So anyone in any district can vote for anyone else in any district. Is, do we have some sort of different setup? Or I guess how does that? I, and you might not be able to answer that, but I'm just curious if the importance or, or why we're, not every school board has districts. Some, you have some at large. Or, or, or maybe sometimes even everybody is at large. Why we have districts, but then we vote at large? Do you get my question?
I, I do. And, and this is very different from my previous experience that um we, as a, as a resident, I voted yesterday. And I got to vote for three of the slots on the board, whereas previously, you know, I was voting for the one person that represented my area. So uh, this is very different uh uh for me as well. Uh, and there are districts that just have at large. I'm not sure when this district was uh initially established, why it was set this way. Um, in, I think, you know, in the end, they do want the board member that is elected to represent those thirty-five hundred, you know, in the, in the proposal, those residents, that those residents would have access to their, their board representative. But uh, as to the why, uh Director Carey, I uh, or, or how we got here, I, I don't know.
Yeah, just, I mean, something I, obviously, in the, in the mix of the billion things that you have, I'd, I'd be interested because we're, we're doing a lot of work to to equalize these districts, which I think is absolutely key and, and needed. I guess I just find it interesting though, that then someone else in District One can decide who they want, who's going to represent District Three. Well, then why does one get to say, I mean, really the only limitation here, because we vote district wide, or the school district wide, really the only limitation is based upon the person representing that, having to live in that district. Um, you know, which may or may not be key. I, I just, I'd be interested to know if that's something we want to put to a vote of the public one day? Or if that's something that we could, because, you know, I've got a friend who's running in Everett and that just that district can vote for him. So if that's something that we want to put up one day to the voters and say, hey, do you want just people in the district to be able to vote for that district? Or if they like it this way? Um, because I even find a lot of people don't know that, don't know that they can vote for all the districts.
I can do some digging on the history and what it would take.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? If not, I'm willing to take a motion. Problem six A.
I make motion that we pass uh the redistricting proposal as provided in uh board docs.
Motion, can I get a second?
I'll second that.
Great. On that one. So motion made in second, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
All right. Item six B, Resolution twenty-one slash twenty-two oh three replacement programs and operations levy. You talked about this last board meeting. This is just officially getting.
That's correct.
Any questions, board, about this?
Just a clarification, Dr. M, we are not raising the taxable amount per thousand. It is, it is staying the same.
Tax rates would be the same, if not declining.
Motion?
I make a motion that we pass Resolution twenty-one, twenty-two oh three replacement programs and operations levy.
A motion, can I get a second?
I'll second that.
All right, second my Dr. Panakis, all in favor?
Hi.
And any advice? All right. Director Beach, should I get a vote for you? I didn't hear, sorry.
Yeah, you did.
Okay, perfect. I, I, I love Zoom.
Do you want me to raise my hand so that you can tell?
I just didn't hear you. I just want to make sure you're, you got a vote. Um, and six C, Resolution twenty-one slash twenty-two oh four replacement technology and school improvement levy.
Okay, just a point of clarification. We are not raising uh the taxable amount per thousand dollars.
Correct.
I make, I make a, make a motion that we pass Resolution twenty-one, twenty-two oh four replacement technology and school improvement levy.
Motion made, can I get a second?
Okay. Second. Oh, yes. Dave, I was giving you a chance, man.
I have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Hi.
All right, I heard everyone. Perfect. All right, consent agenda. There are some additions. Before we get to additions, anyone? Anything?
Yes, uh, I'd like to, uh, to recuse myself from uh voting on the consent agenda because I'm included in one of the, the items.
Okay, all right. Um, there are additions. Everyone got those? So um, any questions on the, on the additions? Not, I'm willing to accept the motion to accept consent agenda with the additions.
Just for clarification, do we need, there was two additions or two separate additions to the consent agenda? Do, do, and the motion, do you have to say both of those? Or I guess, can you just leave it?
I think additions, plural. Yeah. Well, we always have none additions, plural.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the consent agenda with the additions.
Take a second?
I'll second.
All right, second my Director Beach, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi. And one thing, perfect. That's everything I've done for this evening. I want to thank you all for being in attendance. And I will see you all again in two weeks. Got a success in Ed.
Thank you.
Thank you.